Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to move to adopt the agenda for the December 14th, 2022 school board meeting with the following addendum, addition of item 11 supplemental consent for personnel recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So.
A second? Any discussion?
Take a second.
Absolutely.
I'm used to the old package. This, I don't, I don't see it.
The supplemental consent? We did not.
Is it brilliant? Yeah. You have it here.
I have it. Hey, show me where the updated board agenda be. So we just had to add this.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Need further discussion? All those in favor say aye. He knows. She passes. Okay, now to the consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Superintendent comments, Dr. Dan?
We, um, first of all, thank you for being here. Many of us are on that stretch right toward weather breaking. Every, everybody in this district is working so hard, it's incredible. But so is our community. Our community is working so hard for the kids in our school district to have a great holiday season. And we're incredibly thankful for the generosity of our faith-based community for their donations. I mean, this is how incredible this community is. We just got almost, almost $3,000 donation from one of our churches. Just to help our kids that need anything for the holidays. We've had people go and work at the toy box, winter wishes at summer high school. There's just like this influx of support and help around our kids. That's heartwarming and really rejuvenating. It like re-energizes your spirit when you see the outpouring of support. So we just want to make sure that we thank everyone. Merrily, we'll give the board a full report after the holiday season. But it's been pretty remarkable to see the outpouring of support. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Dan. Board member comments? Kevin, would you like to begin?
As far as comments for this week, recently attended the community dinner at S H S over the weekend, which is a student-led event, which is quite amazing to see because you walk in and the staff is there. But, but really has a, has a backup and the students are the ones running it. From waiting on the tables to handing out food and clothing drive items and all of the things that they are able to do. And just the fact that it was planned and executed solely by the students is pretty incredible. And I just would say thank you to all the staff and everybody in the district for what they're doing to help kids get to the holiday season and everything they're doing to support them. Thank you.
Um, just a couple of things. So the, the school board and Dr. Dan, we, we all went to a conference in Spokane. Probably what, a couple of weeks ago? And it was really invigorating. We all went to some really great sessions. I think the high point for me though is having a retreat. We haven't had, been able to have one for quite a while. And I feel like it was a great time for us to share our own ideas and communicate some thoughts that we don't always get a chance to do. So I really appreciated that. And kind of thinking back in with what Kevin said is that I did miss the community dinner this year because it was my oldest daughter's 41st birthday. And I kind of felt like I shouldn't miss it. But as you said, it's a student-led celebration with the community. And it's, it's probably the most heartwarming things of the winter wishes that I've been seeing in years. So I appreciate that things like this can continue on and hopefully for a lot of years.
I attended the Equity Task Force Advisory meeting this week or last week. And just really appreciate the good work that's being done by all the leaders in that, in that group. And especially Josh, who is really, let's see him here tonight, but he's really done such a great job of getting us off to a good start. Pulling us together, making people feel comfortable to speak and to participate. And I just appreciate his, his leadership and the work around that committee. Right?
Yeah. You know, Deb mentioned that we all went to those school board conference. When I think about those conferences, you know, when I first came here years ago, and I was forgetting how long I've been here. Some would say too long, but nobody, nobody went to conferences. And I went first time by myself and the superintendent time. And gradually we've all, the board up here is consistently gone on these conferences. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not so good, sometimes they got a lot of good sessions and not. But sometimes you get so much out of meeting other people from other districts and you see what they're doing. And you know, you're having lunch with somebody is getting some conversations, you can't ask them what they're doing. And I gotta say, one of the things that this district has done and probably Laurie has instigated this probably better than anybody else since I've been here. Is trying to make the community more involved and get community people to see, you know, participate and see what's going on. And whether, you know, that's transparency and trying to make sure that we get everybody's involvement, they know what's going on. But you know, and Laurie has made, the district has made, we got all these committees. We got the Equity Advisory Committee, the Parent Leadership Council, you got the District Curriculum Instruction Material Committee. And then in the task force, you have all these things that's the, the mental, mental health subcommittee, the crime of violence subcommittee, tech facility subcommittee, natural disaster subcommittee. Well, you know, and those are all good things. And you think that the community should be involved. Well, a couple of those that I've been to, nobody shows up, which to me, the district is making us effort to have the community involved in everything. But you don't want to show up at a couple of these, there's two people and the rest is all people from the district. You know, so I'm just saying this that, you know, sometimes you hear people complaining about stuff out there. Well, you know, the district has made an opportunity for everybody to participate and everybody to be involved. But nobody shows up. I just wish that more people would show up to these committees and participate and be involved so that there's more, you know, people are more knowledgeable what's going on and, and they get to voice their input on some of these committees as to what's happening. So it's just kind of my little pet peeve this time because I go to these things and there's no, no community people there. And I wish there would just be more people from the community participating in all these things. Because the district has put it out there for y'all to participate. But there's just, actually just no participation than there should be. That's it.
Kind of been the same vein. You know, I'm on the safety committee. And this last month, I've gone to four of the subcommittees. They have three different subcommittees. Uh, one is physical and mental health. The other one is crimes and violence, then a war and evacuations. I should say four because there's kind of a subcommittee that's kind of like the neck when you look at a, a chain of what they're attempting to do. And that's technology that links it together. Wasn't able to go to the war and evacuations, but I would go to two of the physical and mental health. One of the crimes, violence, and one of the technologies. I did notice some of what Rick is saying, there are just a couple of people from the community. I wish we had more. I do see a lot of dedicated staff members who are down there and working hard, taking notes, coming up with ideas. I, I would suggest maybe four o'clock is not a great time to have a meeting at central office if you're trying to engage the community. Many people don't get home from work until five or six. So I just throw that out for consideration down the road. But it's good work. I was surprised, for example, for the physical and mental health. You know, one of the principals mentioned securely. And they, they get these security alerts from students. And they're so jammed with everything else that they're doing, they don't really have time to, to look at those, sometimes for a couple of days. So yeah, that's a, that's something that needs to be, be ready. So I was glad that you have the right people there to bring up the issues that, that need to be addressed. Another issue was crimes and violence. This was one of our janitors that said, you know, she works at night. And over at Sumner High School, there's so many doors and so many activities and sports, people renting the facilities. They constantly prop the doors open. And even after everybody's gone, she's cleaning up a wing and the door is still open late into the evening. And there's homeless folks to come in and start one. That's a safety concern for the staff. Technology was really good because when they were going, every single one of these had a technology piece. So I threw it out to the technology committee or subcommittee that a lot of this stuff is overlapping, you're going to see it coming your way. Because that is a hub of what needs to, you know, it, it's a bridge, that's for sure. Anyway, that's it. Thank you, Erin. But yeah, consider, consider later. I know it's tough on staff, but you might be able to get more engagement with the community.
Thank you for that report. I appreciate it. I thank you guys all for attending the various meetings too. I know this is a busy time of year and appreciate getting out there and reporting back. It's good to hear all the good, good things happening. Okay, that brings us to policy matters. We see some, there's four policies, four policies today. Included for second reading, do I have a motion to approve the policies as written?
So.
Do I have your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The, uh, the procedures are included in your packet as information only. Um, as well as included information only is the October budget status report. For presentation tonight, our chief finance and district operations officer, Bean Parkinson, will provide a year-end presentation on the 2122. Welcome, Bane. Thanks for that one.
There's another one in front of you.
Other side of the, oh. For the rest of the superintendent, then, tonight I'm presenting to you the 2021, 2022 financial performance. In that last year, not this year. So this is our agenda. We will talk a bit about other funds, but mainly I will go in there on general fund because it's our operational fund. Before I, moving forward, I would like to thank our business office staff for their hard work to make this year a successful year. And especially to Meredith Stephen and Kathy McManus. Our accounting department, this year, all three account are brand new. Not just brand new to school nation, but brand new to government financial. They are all from private sector. So there's a big learning curve. But we cannot make it as an excuse that we cannot submit our financial because there's a deadline by law and it has to be applied. So that's why I am so thankful that we have this team. You look at this team. Great team and we have many new members there, but.
That was so fun, Bane.
I know. It's not Halloween time and we all dress up and have fun as a team.
See, business services can have fun.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're not black and white, right? We, we have some fun, yes. We always do. We have 12 days treat during this holiday. So every day we have a good treat, every day. So transportation vehicle fund, this month we purchasing buses, yellow bus. So we collect money from the state, $326,000. Then we buy $537,000 of all the budgets because we have some fund balance from previous. This is what we bought. We bought one small 12 passengers bus, one 26 passenger bus and two 30 passenger buses. And one 84 bay diesel bus. So that's so as fun is we paying debt when we sold on for construction. So we collect revenue 26 million and we pay off the principal and interest is 24. So we end up 12.9 million in the fund balance. So in a property side, we collect property tax, we collect 25.9 million. And we pay off just principal alone, 16.1 million. So we end the year, outstanding debt is 196.5 million, which is much smarter. We're actually smarter every year we pay off some of them. So the tax rate will be smaller as well, kind of lower year after year. ASP fund, as usual, very strong. We collect million dollars, we spend million dollars. And we end the fund almost $900,000. That's very strong for ASP budget. And this is just the same information, but layout differently by class, by ASP general, so that you can see individual character have strong fund balance, especially in general ASP. Capital project fund. Big dollar amount, but small one. So we collect some stay matched, very small this year. We collect 5.5 millions from tech levy. We have some impact fee as usual, 1.3 million, very small amount of erased issue. But interest earning, do you see that how big it is now? Because the economics difference compared with last year. We have very small statistics now with bigger for in interest. Then we have some SO fund, we spend on capital project, some projects that we spend. So we collect the money directly to capital project fund. Then we have a naming sunset naming fund. So we thought in $2,404 a year. Then the expenditures, we spend 41 million. We end the year, well, we have the transfer in and transfer out, right? Was that being transferred out to general fund to pay for tech levy operational expense? Then we from general fund transfer to capital project fund are those project that the board set aside. That is capital in nature that we have to pay out of capital project fund. So we transfer the money over to spend as it's spent. So we end the year 35 million. It's a major capital project that we work on and some of it's done. So as you know, that we have some of the high school phase one still on, almost done, Mount Hills as well. And we finished this summer high lines, new light and turf field upgrade. Beautiful. And very attractive. And then we also finished the hardwood elementary program. And also the same school that we have some drainage repair. I just mentioned that the SO funds, we have those venerations, X bags replacement. Everything's we spent on this SO fund is for the air quality for schools, for students and staff at schools. And that's what we are allowed to spend on. And then some technology levy project as well. So this is general fund. We local fund we collect, including levy and other local money, like donation fee and fine 28 million. And we had the state funding, which is the biggest portion of our revenue. In that 115 million. And then we have some federal including the SO fund, then others is small. So total, we collect revenue in general funds, 159, 155 million. And we spent 145 million. So we end the year this year. Now you can see that we transfer in and transfer out. That's aligned with what we just said in the capital project. So the other side. Uh, we end the year 41.8 million fund balance. So you can compare the two years of revenue, mostly is apportionment because we have enrollment coming in higher than last year. So we gather a bit more money there. And basically you can see that every car is, is not as big, except the federal fund. You can see the federal grants, we have ASMR, so it's shown in the graph. And this is the two years expenditure comparisons. Mostly we spend more in certificate salary, cost by salary. Uh, I think benefits pretty much the same because they kind of reduce the benefit a little bit at the time for sale dollar. And other than that, everything's pretty comparable for two years. We don't really spend our wads, I guess, right? And people will ask, where does the money come from? So majority of the money, as I just mentioned, that is coming from state apportionment, almost 60%. This is drive by the enrollment, student enrollment. Then we also have a small portion of property tax and other savings. Other than that, any other pieces very small compared to the state funding. So where's the money go? You can see the pie, three big portion are all salary benefit for staff. So 86% are labor costs in the total 100% of our budget. Only 14 cents of $1 is in our supplies, contract, travel, probably minimum job. And then some equipment. So only 14% in our budget. So this is the general understanding of each program, like basic add, special add, CTE, those program. The spending is the first column and then the fundings in the four middle columns from different funding. Because some of them is from local funding, some from state apportionment, you see that. Then some state grants and some federal grants. Then end up some of them in red and some of them are okay. So then we add to it as a left to help our other negative here. So again, we have all those differences. We have 941 million add to the fund balance issue. All this is for you. You were like this slide. This is for special add funding and thank you for asking for the special add funding. Because this is probably a top, uh, in the legislature right now. So you can see that we have enrollments increase as you see these lines, enrollment increase. This yellow is our revenue we collect. The blue is expenditure. When you see revenue lower than expenditure means that we have to subsidize using levy money. That's why levy money is spent is because a lot of funding are not fully funded. So that's why, and you can see that revenue for students, this expenditure for students, this. So this year, I mean, not this year, 21, 22, we only collect 12,477, but we spent 14,000 some for each student. So that's a gap. So fully funded, special add. Okay, this is our ending fund balance to come up with the 41.8 million. Now, that's a lot of restriction when it comes to fund balance. It's not everything you can spend out of this 41 million. Because you can see the restricted balance. These have to spend on exactly what they said, food services or vocational like CTE or lab. You cannot spend on any other place, only those places, that's why they call restricted. And then we have some like inventories in our warehouse or nutrition services and some inventory. Those are not money, but it's still considered as our wealth when we have that. Now this portion, 10.69 million uh, from the board's resolution, set aside this money committed to this project. So that cannot be used unless the board had to release it in order to be able to use. They are all fixed there. So these columns pretty much things cannot touch. Then in this, we need to set aside some money. For example, we have some PO purchase order that we already committed last year that we have not received any products. And we have to set aside to paper. And then of course, curriculum is always something we need to prepare every year. And also we need to prepare some major project, rules, everything suddenly break down, we need to have some money set aside for that. Cyber security, always, always need to prepare. You never know, one of the staff clicked on a link, that's it. The only take that little gesture will ruin the whole district system. So we have always to prepare for this. It's very scary. I mean, this education thing for staff, don't click on the link if you don't know, that happens, right? So then we have some part here, minimum fund balance part of that 5% is here. This is on top of it, it's not both. So that's how it come up with the fund balance. This is a graph, my favorite graph, to show you the greens are revenue, the red expenditure. You see that if green low than red, uh-uh, green higher than red, good. Right? So these four years, we have green higher than red, means that we control our spending. You can see that when we do that, you can see that fund balance going up. If the other way around, your fund base will go down. So they are.
Yeah, we know that one thing. We got that.
Can I have a different question?
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask you, what year did you start? Just, just sure.
What year did you start?
Yeah, um, 1819. The end of, of 1819.
So that's BB, like before Bane.
So that's B B, like before being.
Yeah, I just wanted to go forward in that way. Yeah, this is after. So um, want to bring you back last year. Our memories sometimes forget, but this is reminding us. That year twenty one, twenty two is the first year we opened school in person, the whole year, without interruption since the pandemic. Then also the good news is the enrollment coming back as the pre pandemic level. Yeah, I did. I pressed too fast. A lot of district enrollment in the north of us continues behind. What's that mean? Means that you don't have the revenue to cover the existing operational costs. We're so lucky. We have kids coming back when we open school. And this is also the first year of the open door engagement program. We had one kid, one F T E, not one kid, but one F T E, but now we have eleven. So we have expanding a little bit of that. Then during the time we replaced two vans, one truck and we buy more. So we also finished five bargaining agreements. That's a really long, long hard work. Then it's also the first year of our five years strategic plan. So what's the challenge right now? We have in twenty two, twenty three or four, we have bus driver shortage. And it's not just for some of the money exclusion. It's a lot of school dish you can have that and even cancel cancel routes. Because of the shortage, we have to have double bus routes. And then create like a don't know about that, right? Create additional para hours for supervision. Because the case that you wait, then we have to have a dog to watch for them. Then because of that, we also at the same time short shortage of peril. So we want more peril, but we don't have peril. We want bus drivers, we don't have bus driver. This is pretty much like nationwide issue. It's not just for us, but we are doing it. And a lot of accidents because of COVID or flu seasons and and you can see that the substitute cost is dramatically. Then the inflation is true. So who would know that we have to budget the fuel be so high, but it really increased quite a bit. And supply chains too. We always have to worry, okay, if there's something happen to our budget and book down, you have to wait. You don't have any parks available right away. So we have to prepare. That's why maintenance is important. That you don't wait until it break and fix. Supply chains wouldn't allow us to do that. And of course, we have space shortage to or space limit, especially on hill. So had you think about our future, what to do with that when we don't have enough space to hold, to house students?
Maybe you can answer this, maybe you can't.
I'll try.
So you know, you had on the last slide that you need space on film.
Yeah.
And so one of the other slides you had, you know, they paid down the debt service fund.
Yes.
Sixteen million.
Yeah.
So the current outstanding is still one hundred and ninety six.
As of September one, yes. So we pay off June, December. So this December, we pay off.
Yeah, so we have nearly two hundred million in outstanding debts. And you know, there's a formula based on assessed value within the B S P.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what our current, if we need to go out with a bond in the next year or so and try to finish the high school and build more capacity on the hill? What, what's that current bond capacity might be?
Uh, leave it over five hundred million. Just calculate that the other day.
So. Well, potential bond could be three hundred million dollars.
Oh, yes, yes, easily.
And I hope that's enough to do all the stuff we need to do.
Well, you know that right now, building one high school, you can ask more.
Just like two hundred million, I thought.
That's a lot of money, right?
That's just to finish the high school. So we got three hundred million potentially in bond, that's the bond capacity. It doesn't leave a whole lot to finish out the rest of the district. So.
Yeah.
I hope they're sharpening their pencils.
Yeah, and we'll have a committee help us make those important recommendations to the board.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That brings us to two resolutions. The first is resolution oh seven twenty two, twenty three M R S C rosters models while public works consultant and vendor rosters. The district administration recommends support adopt this resolution right here emotion.
So moved.
A second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Probably for Ben. So on this resolution for the M R S C rostered model, small public works. I went on their website to check out what this organization was. It seemed like a pretty good idea, really, at their organization of our small roster management. Will this have any impact on our current policy that we have in place for contracting or no?
So we have, there's a R C W that it required small public work that you can use a smaller brushroom and currently we maintain a very small. Nobody signed up, not many, not enough. So we have to go to the bigger organization, have a bigger list. So we can ask for quotes easily and it's very small data amount for picking back in on those. And these organizations serve not just the local government like city, county, but it also serves many school dish. Our his counties, who they just are there to.
Uh, New York's Pierce County is on there.
Yes.
And I did check that they, they kind of go through and verify the vendors before they.
Oh, yeah, they do all the work for us. You don't have to do.
I was, I was, when I saw it, I was, what is this? Last, last was surprise.
Thank you, Ben.
He kind of asked my question there, but when you, when you have that list, because we've always, you know, when we do the big list, you always got to take the lowest person, you know, on biz, which I disagree with sometimes. So when you're using this, you don't have to take the lowest.
So this is.
You have a little bit more of a chance to look at quality of work and what they've done and.
Right. But either way, you, if you maintain your own list or you go from this list, we always go with not just the price as one factor when you do the tally. You have to have responsiveness. The quality reference from, from other places. I mean, whoever run the bid, open the bid or open the pool to to evaluate the polls, we need to have that criteria, it's not just the price alone, but the quality. I think you're always concerned that if the lowest price didn't come up, the quality is not good, then end up we have even paid more. Even though the R C W said that the lowest response fit, not the lowest price. So we just follow that. The tally.
Any further discussion? All right, the recommendation has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Recommendation passes. Uh, let's see, resolution number oh eight twenty two, twenty three, mountain, mountain middle school damages declaration of emergency. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Stop this discussion.
I just, I think it's. That's fantastic though. Let's get taken care of so quickly. Good job, you know, Marina, Dave, you know, I know you guys acted on it real quick. Uh, Lori was sending us some pictures about it. You guys were on top with good job.
Want to summarize what we're talking about.
Yeah. For those that might not know.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, I haven't seen how I kind of say this. A car, a Crown Victoria drove through the main entrance of Mountain View Middle School, down the two hundred wing and came back out.
On Saturday night?
On Saturday night. I mean, until you watch the video, you don't even think this is possible. But it is in uh, the damage could have been much worse. So all things considered, uh, the damage was far less extensive than it could have been. No one was hurt and the person that was driving the car is in custody. Uh, so thanks to the Bonn Lake Police. But huge kudos to our maintenance and operations staff. Chris Biller was there boarding up the, boarding up the door. Dave had his guys on it. Marina was there with Paul, Paul Davis, um, the company that cleaned it all up, was ready for kids. Uh, Monday morning, we were there to support the staff and they were in good spirits. Uh, some great stories and on we went with school, but yeah, when I even sent you guys the message, I'm like, I don't think a text message is going to do this justice, but a car drove through a school. Yeah. So thank you to both of you.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? She passes. Right, we have a first reading for the instructional doc, instructional materials adoption.
Well, or Stephen, like I can just.
Just come on up in a minute. And this is in regards to U S history curriculum option. Welcome, Stephen Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you members of the board. It's great to be here tonight for the first reading of our recommended texts and resources. And just to provide just a maybe a reminder or a little clarification. So if you remember when Dr. Lombardo was here at the district, uh, as our various committees are working, whether C T E or secondary or elementary to identify curriculum. Uh, the next step that they'll go through, once the committee has made a recommendation is to our district, uh, review references, the D C I M C. And so because I and our Tosa, Kara Wilson, uh, lead that process, then we bring the recommendations here to the board. So, uh, so tonight I'll be speaking on, uh, two about the recommendation for the U S history as well as the recommended curriculum and resources for elementarys. First up though, uh, we have U S history. And I'm here tonight with Kelly and after a year of work, we're pleased to recommend that the board approve the selection of McBrathills United States History Modern Times. The text will be used for eleventh grade U S history. Um, a summary of the adoption, review and selection process for the curriculum was provided to the board. The copyright that we will be, that we're recommending to the board is the twenty twenty three edition. Again, from McBrathill, estimated cost for both digital platform and hard copy text is one hundred and two thousand dollars based on eight hundred and fifty students across our high schools. So this amounts to an initial cost per student of a hundred and twenty dollars. However, we anticipate that we are making this adoption for a recommending that this adoption would be for a six year period at a minimum. So that further reduces the cost to about twenty dollars per student over the six years. Um, in addition, in addition to sharing the recommended text, Kelly and I are here tonight to highlight some of the unique and innovative work that we've done and how we went about this curriculum adoption compared to years past. Um, it's outlined in the presentation, so we just are here to kind of speak to some highlights. Um, as I said before, U S history is a course that all eleventh graders take and is one of our students' graduation requirements. An additional requirement that we meet, um, in part for our U S history course is the implementation of since time immemorial, we often hear us refer to S T I. This tribally developed curriculum will be integrated into our frameworks for U S history, which meets Senate Bill five four three three legislation from two thousand and fifteen.
Thanks, Steve. Um, so how did it all begin? So we really thought about how we kick off this adoption, this course review curriculum selection process. We really wanted to, um, to be different. Strategic plan process really include stakeholder voice in our district. And so we took an opportunity to, to try things out to be, you know, to be innovative. And like I said, to just try new processes. So I'm going to share kind of three highlights on how we, um, gathered stakeholder input throughout the process. So the very first thing we thought about was who would be on the committee? As you can imagine, there's lots of different meetings about the different purposes. So we had about seventeen people who are fully committed to the process. And this ranged from, I'll give three fantastic students who were on the group. We had parents, community members. We had building administrators, district administrators. We even have the executive director from the Puget Sound Educational District, the executive directive, executive director from the Center for Strengthening the Teaching Profession, our own Native American Education Director. So we just had this wide vast of people with different, um, different viewpoints. And some people spent upwards of forty to sixty hours in this process. I am so thankful, um, to each and every one of them. So when we talk about involvement, we definitely had a lot of dedicated people. So, um, so we, we gathered it up. Who would be on this committee? So the next thing was us, how could we kick it off? So we really thought our very first thing was to go out to the community and really listen to our parents and to see what were their, what is their perspective? You know, what do they really think about with their child? What do they want their child to learn and experience as a result of taking a U S history course? So we did what's called empathy interviews and this was a really heavy lifting. And basically this is an interview where we just started with an open ended question and the question was basically, you know, what would you want your student to know? Be able to do, understand as a result of taking U S history and still find value in five to 10 years from now? We know that whatever our students learn now, we want them to still, you know, it needs to have meaning afterwards. So families started talking. We then further probed like what experiences did you have that led to that? And what would you want your child to say when you're sitting around the dinner table? And so it just, there were some really powerful stories, things that people had experienced, what their dreams and hopes were for their children. And those are the kind of things that just really, you know, sparked the, um, the whole process. So another thing that we did, I'm thankful of our teachers, I went back to both buildings, they interviewed, had classroom discussions. Um, hundreds of kids at both schools who were either currently in U S history or who had previously taken it and just asked the students themselves. Um, what did you find as being a value in taking U S history? What are you still carrying with you as well as what are your hopes for future students taking this course? And again, we took as many notes, um, everything that we could gather and the students were not shy at all in sharing of what their perspective was, you know, on what they want to learn.
All right. So from the work, uh, we developed a stakeholder vision document to serve, serve as a guide for our work in identifying priority standards and selecting curriculum. The vision guided the rest of the work along with the district's promise to know value and support all of our students. We literally started every meeting with a reminder, coming back to this graphic that Kelly is holding up. So I'll be honest, it was later, but it was very interesting to cross reference the vision document with a portrait of the graduate document that comes from the strategic plan and just try to, try to see where the connections are between the two. And so I'll just share with you a few things. Um, so from the vision document, the U S history team, uh, identified that they want students to think critically. And we all know in the portrait of the graduate, it calls out for innovative and critical thinkers. Um, in the vision document, it talked about, um, having students, um, have the ability to apply historical context. Um, and in the portraits of a graduate, it talks about globally conscious students. And the final example, um, in the vision document, it talks about kids having the ability to consider multiple perspectives when they're, uh, you know, addressing a topic. And, uh, in the portrait of graduate, it talks about students being responsible community contributors, globally conscious, twenty first century collaborators. So lots of connections and parallel thinking between the vision document and the portrait of graduate. All right. So we wrapped up last school year, so the twenty one, twenty two school year, we wrapped it up with the identification of the priority standards, which set the stage for this school year and we embarked on selecting the curriculum. To kind of set the stage for that, uh, we worked with O S P I and neighboring districts who had recently gone through a U S history adoption process to develop a co, develop comprehensive rubrics. We borrowed heavily from their work and identified curriculum to bring forward to the group. And so for the past four months, and this has been just a great time for the kids to shine. But for the past four months, we've been working with our committee and especially the students. But for the past four months, we've been working with our committee and especially the students. And to go through the rubber process as we reviewed the curriculum. I encourage the board to review the highlights that we included about the curriculum. So it's one of the slides that actually speaks to some highlights that this particular recommendation offers. And with the teachers and students, it really resonated with them, having the different things like language transit, translation, the ability to take a text and either level it up in its difficulty or level it down. And the ability to do so without it being apparent, you know, to students throughout the classroom. Yep, next phase, more.
Yeah, so it's been, it seems like it's been a long, has been an incredible journey to be here before you today, recommending a textbook. And we know the next steps are really to get the curriculum approved first, and then we have a lot of work ahead of us still. So what lies ahead is we would gather our teachers together to develop our curriculum frameworks, our common assessments. Because one thing that's important in our district is that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum across both of our high schools. It doesn't matter what classroom a student is in, they all should, you know, have that same level of rigor, all exposed to the same, you know, same curriculum. So along with that, and we're planning professional learning for our teachers. So one of the things we always do is do professional learning around, you know, the, the textbook, the materials, the frameworks, et cetera. But one thing that we're adding that's extra special, and I would say innovative with this, is that in a social studies classroom, there's often classroom discussions. And so one of the things that we really want to do is we want to make sure that our teachers are well-versed. And how do I have conversations in the classroom where all students feel safe, that they're nurtured, that, that voices are heard in a respectful manner. And so again, just something we're highlighting. So I know we kind of glazed over that really quickly. And so Steve and I both would be, be excited to sit with any of you at any time to go over the curriculum, highlight different units, answer any questions that you have about the materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, any comments or questions for Kelly and Steve?
I have two questions.
Hey, I got the book I'm going to take and read it. Might take me a while, but I'm going to.
There's some online quizzes we could send you.
He does better with you.
Yeah, we have those too. Go ahead.
I liked your presentation here in the slides. I saw that with the links. We also got a link to the material to go view it online. The first time I've ever really reviewed a textbook online with all the student-like workbook and the insights. I spent probably about 10 hours just looking at the student side. I still like, want to go back in and check out the teacher side. I got just a few hours in on the teacher side, but. By and large, I was really impressed. I thought there was only a couple of times I was reading it, I was, there was a turn of a phrase, and I thought, oh. Then I thought about it, it was like, well, yeah. But that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's what happened, that's what occurred. So again, there was enough material in there to make students think critically. Lots of stuff in the student handbook, it encouraged debate about historical context and interpretation of an event, stuff like that. Well done, I liked. So my question, two of them are, first one is, on that electronic version, is it going to be stagnant for six years like the book? Or would they, do they have the possibility of updating and possibly inserting stuff down the road that they might, that we might not know about?
Yeah, one thing that's unique about this, this online resource that is different than others, the actual textbook itself is kind of static. It doesn't change. The one that, that we discovered, there's an access in there where they actually have current events that they upload weekly around something that's happening, that we don't know that our teachers would necessarily, you know, use those. But the textbook itself is, is, there's no changes to the textbook. That'd be exactly how it is.
Do you think the kids would mostly use the textbook or would they be using their ProBook to access? I had to tell you, if I was a high school student, I wouldn't want to look at that. I found the, first time I've really ever looked in textbook online that I thought, I like, I kind of like this.
Yeah, different teachers have different opinions on the use of electronic resources, rather than, some teachers want students to close that ProBook and just have that experience with a hard copy book. But I mean, the, what's available online for kids, they can highlight their own, like their electronic textbook. They can take annotated notes. I mean, there's so many, you know, fancy features, they can click a button, have it read to them. And so it's just so much more interactive than, you know, it's a different way of learning.
I thought the computer was pretty cool. It's kind of what leading the convention on like. You know, I, I think working people in the community would have a difficult time coming down here and spending eight to 10 hours going through this, if they really want to be thorough. When you're talking about history, human growth and human development, things like that. My large community gets interested. And so my question is, is it possible that the community could have an online access like the board members have?
So that's a difficult question. So when we purchase, so like in a preview period, there's possible that we could have people look at things. I want to be careful, because I don't want to break any, you know, like, I don't want to say it's not a copyright law. But generally, what happens when we have, when we buy the number of licenses for books, we would have to have somebody use one of those licenses in order to view it online. So like we buy, like Steve mentioned, 850 licenses, it can't just, it's not like we can post it on a website and then just allow anyone to look at it, because we're purchasing that number of, of sets of material. So that's kind of, that's the challenge with it, when we have like a preview license. I don't know what that makes. I want to ask some questions of the company before we posted anything live, I'd say.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, the other question is, well, is it possible for a person to actually say, I'm interested, can I, can I get a link? But then you're right, could run, potentially run into the same problem where that person that shares the link with too many people.
So and people are welcome anytime to come into central office. We have copies of the textbooks. We do that anytime with any curriculum during the school year, regardless of what content it is. We make arrangements with, with, you know, families, community members that come in, and they are welcome anytime to come preview materials. Yeah, we welcome that.
Do you have any idea whether if we had to buy a special license for the community to preview it online? I mean, if they actually sold a little preview license for, you know, a three-week period.
Yeah, I don't know that. It's something we can, we have to look into it.
Yeah, perhaps that we reach out to, we just have to reach out to the rep and just find out. We, you know, as people outside of the district were coming in, we'd have to work to make sure that they had the access to be part of the committee to work. So we just had to talk to the rep to say, what, what would that look like?
Yeah, so I guess that's my question.
Yep.
And I guess you'd have to get more buy-in from the rest of the board. Is that something that you guys could do and, and look into? I know if I had to come in here and sit for 10 hours during, during a workday, it wouldn't happen. But on the weekend, if I could access from my computer at home, we'll get something to eat, come back and look at it.
True, we need to check with Mary too.
Yeah, we'll check with Mary.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Before you guys, before you, before you, before you, let me see if I can say that how many times, before you finish, that is exceptional work. I mean, groundbreaking work in this district. I've never been, or never seen an adoption that has included so many students' voices. The work they have put into making this curriculum beneficial and valuable is outstanding. So well done. Really.
Thank you. We're just going to carry us to the next.
All right, well, I have the pleasure of making the next round of recommendations, and, and I'll give credit to the elementary team because they did some really great work as well that led up to these two recommendations. Our next recommendations for the board tonight are elementary curriculum resources. Specifically, administration recommends the board approve two resources for elementary human growth and development in HIV/AIDS curriculum adoption. A summary of the adoption review and selection process for the fifth grade HIV/AIDS human growth and development curriculum was provided to the board. The recommended resources are, the first one, HIV and Me, Marissa's Story. This, this would be used for our fifth grade students around the HIV and H curriculum or learning both. Seattle Children's Hospital, with input from the OSPI is where we get this resource. The second resource is called, is titled Always Changing and Growing Up. We have two different videos that are part of this recommendation. One video would be for male students, one would be for female or male and female instruction. The, this is produced by Proctor Gamble, and this would be used again in our fifth grade human growth and development instruction. Both of these resources are free of charge, and they're available to us online. So. So that's, that's really it. The only last comment that I have here is that for the anticipated instruction, it'd be approximately 45 minutes to an hour per lesson for each of these topics. Any questions about either of these recommendations? All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And just a reminder that we have a first reading. It gives us an opportunity to explore the materials, ask questions before it comes back to the board for a vote to adopt.
Right, we'll be back in January.
All right. See you then. Thank you. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. First up is the Right at School Before and After School Childcare.
Yeah, so it's my privilege to introduce Cindy Lawson from Right at School and her team. This is, well, this can be exciting information, because I think we're going to be looking at really changing the face of the before and after school childcare in the district. And not only expanding it, but providing students with a real quality opportunity. So Cindy, thanks for driving, driving, traveling. Did you, you didn't drive, did you? She lives in California, so yeah.
So while he's getting this up, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to present to you this evening. And I was really impressed with your legend. I see a lot of district presentations across the country and very impressive. That's dope. Seems to be doing great. My name's Cindy Lawson. I'm the Vice President of School Partnerships with Right at School, and I have the privilege of working with school districts across the country, primarily on the western part of the United States. I have a soft spot here in Washington, and we have our local team here. I will let them introduce themselves. So Tiffany, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Bliss. I'm the Regional Vice President, and I oversee all operations in the Northwest and Midwest. I'm really excited to be here. My son is product of Bonnie Lake, Sumner School District. He went to Iseman, Mountview, and graduated from Bonnie Lake High School. So just really excited to be in this community. I've been with Right at School since we opened up operations in Washington. I live in Bonnie Lake, so it's just really near and dear to my heart.
She's been begging me for.
And hi, everyone. I'm Priti Herbeau. I'm the Senior Area Manager with Right at School. I've been with Right at School since I first came to Washington in 2017. I started in Kewal. I'm also local to the area. Origin is right down the hill, so this area is very familiar and to my heart.
When energy starts, you have other folks just go re-planting here and drop the crew.
We have two others here, our managers in the back as well. We have Kimberly Ridden and Jaren also in the back as well.
All right. Well, I will go ahead and get started. That's okay with you.
And so they, they're going to want you to use a microphone to people online, I can hear you.
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My voice is still loud, so I'll try to. Yeah. All right. So first off, I'm going to just kind of start with a little bit of why after school is important and why it really matters. Elementary school students are awake for 5,000 hours a year. So if you think about the amount of time you have them in school, and all of the things that you have to accomplish with children on a daily basis, you really only get them for 20% of their waking hours. So you're expected to solve real-world problems with only 20% of their waking hours. So if you add up the amount of time children are on before-school, after-school, winter break, spring break, early release, late start, all of that out-of-school time between 6:30 and 6:00 PM, it actually equates for another thousand hours. So at Right at School, we know we can make a transformative impact on the lives of children and really maximize that additional 20% of the time that we have with children. So now they have 40% of their waking hours that is really valuable and value-add. And research shows, there's so much more post-COVID, but research says that if children are well-balanced before and after school program, not your traditional kind of recreation, there's nothing wrong with that, but a really well-balanced program, these are the benefits that you'll see. So you will see higher executive functioning, better behavior and health, and the longer they're with us, the more you will see that achievement gap close. But unfortunately, a lot of programs fall short. It's a really challenging time right now, and so oftentimes you go to a program, there's no curriculum. It looks kind of like a glorified babysitting program, right? There might be some arts and back, arts and crafts, might be a little bit of homework, might be some projects, depending on if you have a great director or not. And then, you know, they're hiring people, and just as quick as they're hiring, they're turning them around. And oftentimes, they're hiring people and they're not even training them, so they're just throwing them into programs without training. And these are our future leaders, these are our future educators, these are our future teachers. And they're leaving, and now they don't want to be in education anymore, because their first experience in a before-and-after-school program has not been the best experience. And when you do that, it leads to a lot of behavior issues with children, lack of supervision. You know, and then the biggest thing right now is waitlists. And so we're all over, and I've been hearing from Tiffany for as many years that about the long waitlist out here. And so, you know, we have historically in Right at School, not going with, not had a waitlist. This is our first year ever that we had to have a few until we ramp up with staff, but the first time in our history that we've had to have some waitlists. But traditionally, we have no waitlist, and we have the majority of them off waitlist now, or getting to be off waitlist in the state of Washington. So I don't know if any of this resonates with you. I know you can't, you know, shake your head yes or no as parents or, or as a grandparent now. But I was, I'm a single mom. I've been raising my kids physically financially for about 19 years of my own, and this is a huge, this has been a huge issue for me. And really, the reason Right at School became of existence is because our CEO, founder, Dr. Martha Rockchild, walked into his daughter's after-school program and saw her eating Doritos and watching a video. And having his doctorate in education, he just knew he can do better. And so in 2010, he started Right at School. Since then, we service more than 40,000 students across the United States. And you can see here, these are our Washington partners, and I might have missed one, because we've gotten so many recently. But you can see that we are actually in every single one of your surrounding communities. And we are growing as we speak. You know, our mission at Right at School is to inspire a love of learning, support schools, and give parents peace of mind. And something that we are really proud of, it's for three years in a row now, the AASA, which is the National Superintendent Association, has named us their after-school provider of choice. It's an honor we don't take lightly. It's something that we are really proud of. We do a lot of work, not only at local level, state level, but at a national level. And one of our thought leaders, Dr. Dawn Bridges, sits on the SEO cohort for AASA. And so she's leading change across the country, and really helping create that sense of belonging, making sure children are feeling secure in school. And, you know, with that being said, you know, our curriculum, really, it's about building children up. So like yourselves, we're here for the long game of education. So everything we do is about building these attributes that we know as educators will continue to unfold throughout their lives. You know, the last thing a child wants to hear at 3:00 PM is like, who wants to learn some more? Like, no, they're burnt out. They've been in school all day. So every year, they get to enjoy fresh new curriculum that's been written by our curriculum experts, who many are former teachers and administrators. And so we, you can see, we have these thematic units, and each one of these units has a focus area ranging from art to science to music to math. And you'll see, for example, in this slide, students are learning about Roman aqueducts, and they're applying their design thinking as they build and test their models that have been built out of recyclables. You know, the biggest thing for us post-COVID is really just igniting that spark and that joy in kids again. We want them to have fun, all while engaging in hands-on, disguised learning. So that being the key, they think they're just having a ton of fun, but what they don't know is there's actually a ton of learning going on, and that's really our secret sauce. And the nice thing is, is yes, we do have this beautiful curriculum that gets written, something that thematic units come back every other year, because they're really popular. But we're not a cookie cutter approach. So if you have a school that has a stronger STEM focus, we have 15 years of curriculum, so we can take out some of our more science geared thematic units, or if you have a bigger art focus, then we can pull out some of our art curriculum and we can bring it back. So again, we can really tailor our programs to meet the needs of the district, because we have so much amazing curriculum units and disguised learning projects. You know, and it's really important that we are entrenched in everything that goes on in the community. Locally inspired is one of our values. And so we will be a part, all of those charity events, we will be a part of that. I just moved to a brand-new community and built a house, and I was with the superintendent last night there. I was able to get him to the district. I'm a grandbaby now, so I have a vested interest. And he was talking about how they're meeting at Kohl's on Saturday for 5:00 AM, and all the children are coming there, and we each got to go take a child in without their parents. And we have some lists of things that we need to do with them, that they need a jacket, a warm coat, some shoes. But then we can go free, and we can take them in on a shopping experience. So we want to be involved, not only as individuals, but as a company, to be able to communicate, to donate and give back to your community. The more entrenched we are in your community, the better our programs are, the stronger our partnerships are. So we'll pass out water walk-a-thons. We'll do face painting at. Do face painting at carnivals. We even attend board meetings and you're like, why do you attend board meetings? We actually learned a lot about a district by attending a board meeting. I mean, just around the week one this evening. Because oftentimes people forget about after school because it's an afterthought. So if you're rolling out something like a P B I S or, or Twenty First Century Learning and we're working with children after school, it's really important that we're aligned. It's really important that we're having the same conversations. So if you allow us to attend the trainings, we'll pay our staff. So they can go back and train our staff. And so again, that alignment is really important. And, and then we'll find out about the charity events that are going on. We'll find out about some of the initiatives that we can help sponsor. So again, all of our local team will be at your board meeting, so get used to their faces because you will see them. And you know, it's really important that, you know, not only that we have a great curriculum, but that we have great people. And again, this has been our biggest challenge of staffing, but we're next door in Puyallup. We have seen more growth. People are coming back post pandemic. So we had some pretty high numbers pre pandemic. They kind of fell flat last year. But I think Puyallup was averaging about thirteen, fourteen hundred kids. Pre pandemic, we're eighteen hundred and we're fully staffed. Now in Bellevue, that's another story. We're challenging over there, but Puyallup with eighteen hundred kids, we're, we're good to go there. But we are nothing without our staff. And so it's really important. We hire from three, four main sources. First and foremost, if there is a current program in place, which we know there is, those staff get the first right of refusal. I've already presented to the mayor and the city council, so we're all having conversations together about this. And you know, the good thing is, is their staff would get paid quite a bit more to work with Right at School. So there's a substantial increase to the staff as well as, you know, anything over thirty hours, they get full benefits with us. And there's a lot of other perks. Also, if they work with us, they get a hundred percent of their childcare taken care of. So current staff have the first right of refusal. Secondly, we hire a lot of paraprofessionals and instructional aides. And I heard you're struggling already. So I just had a conversation with Alan, who's superintendent Auburn today. We had lunch and I have a meeting with Ivan Duran, superintendent Highline tomorrow morning for breakfast. To talk about how we can align and how we can work together and provide a full-time position. So you can work with you as a paraprofessional instructional aide in the morning and then work with us in the afternoon. So how can we align to help you, help us and us help you? Let's do this together. So those are the conversations we are having now. And so I've already had Federal Way, Renton, a lot of other districts. So our team, we had a call today about it and our team's gonna kind of build. Out and kind of do a, just a bigger conversation of how we can align and help each other. The other thing you talked about was getting offline a little bit of transportation. Where we can be at every location, so we can get every school, which would help with your transportation costs as well. We won't be at some schools. We will service every single one of your elementaries and if you need to, their middle schools. So a lot of instructional aides, paraprofessionals, great thing is they already know the community. They already know the children. They get our amazing training. They can get a bring back into your district. And we hire a lot of people who are going into education, people who want to work with children, who have a passion for working with children. Might be getting their degree in elementary ed, theater, art, whatever that is. And the nice thing is, is we have this amazing curriculum. So we know first year teachers struggle most with curriculum implementation and classroom management. And they get to hone in on all those skills in our program. And then oftentimes they go and work for you. So it's great. So when, when we just ask that we can keep them for at least the first year for that continuity of care. But yeah, that's what we promote. We promote opportunities for them. And we want to give them that great experience in our program so that they will come and work with you and work with both of our children one day. And then a lot of retired teachers, because we all know educators never retire. And you guys all know our service. I just talked to them last Monday because of what happened, but. They never retire. So they get to turn that hat back. They get to be much more experiential with children, not so frontal, and they get to just in their careers, really engaging and having fun with kids again. We do pay quite a bit more and so, and we do have some great opportunities with benefits and childcare with our staff. So you know, we really do, once we hire these amazing people, we put them through this, our proprietary blended training model. Of online and in-person training. So you can see at the bottom, some of the assessments that they have to pass before they even go into live training. So once we hire them, they go through an extensive background check. Once they get cleared for our local state and federal. Background clearances, they have to do assessments. And then once they pass all of these assessments, they go into live training. And live training is really a day in the life. It's not me sitting here talking to you. It's, it's really engaging. It's interactive. It's scenario based. We're talking through what's it gonna look like when we breed your children? What's the worst case gonna look like? Let's walk through the worst case scenario and how to manage it. Are we perfect at first? No, because we know the first six to eight weeks is really about building a foundation. Making sure children are safe, setting schedules, creating a structure. So again, those first six weeks really are gonna be a little bumpy because we need to make sure that we get through those things. And once we get through that, we really have the opportunity to thrive with children. There's constant ongoing coaching, constant ongoing support. Every school has educators. We call them educators. Those are kind of your teachers, teachers assistants. And then there's a program manager at every single campus. It's kind of like a site director. And they report into an area manager who reports into our regional vice president. That's kind of how our structure looks. Um, I've heard there was a issue or someone who had a passion for children with special needs. Having one of my own, this is near and dear to my heart as well. I'm dealing with the child dysentery. So it's been a big challenge. But it is really important that we accept children wherever they're at and with a variety of special needs, wherever they're on the spectrum. So with two to three inclusion specialists, depending on the time of the year, on our team. And they work with families and they work with our team to make special accommodations to make sure that we're accepting children where they're at. Unfortunately, we don't get the safety funds that you get to support a one-on-one. So oftentimes we can work with districts on that funding. I was just in a school in Manhattan Beach in California and there was a one-on-one there and the insurance paid for it. So that's the first time I'd heard that insurance was paying for a one-on-one for a child with special needs. There's so many different things that we can look at to be able to support a child if they need a one-on-one. Care in our program. So this is a pricing. You can see our program, the nice thing is we have flexibility. Families can come one day, two day, three day, four day or five days. We're seeing post pandemic, people are still working from home. They don't need five days a week. So the current program now, you can see where it says current pricing. It looks like there's five day a week pricing, right? They only have one option. All five days or nothing. We'll give them the opportunity to come one day, two day, three day, four day, or five days. Families can change their schedules every month. In addition to that, we have district employees, any district employee will get fifty percent off their tuition, including school board members. Fifty percent off your tuition because we want your employees. We want your employees to bring their children. They're almost like a marketing, right? If they're in our program, they can, they can talk to other families about it. So any district personnel who gets paid by Sumner Bonnie Lake School District gets fifty percent off their tuition. Any families receiving free energy sludge gets twenty percent off their tuition. We also take D S H S and military childcare wear. So we will help those families get on D S H S or their military families. There's so much funding out there with military families. We got word of, right? That we can help them with that funding to help their, get their childcare taken care of. Siblings get ten percent off. In addition, we will give you back five percent of our revenue. So any revenue that we make as we grow, we will give you five percent back. As you know, as lieu of being on your campus. And then we will give another three percent back in scholarships. So to give you an example, when we started in Puyallup, which is one of our first school districts here. They had three hundred students across all their twenty, they were twenty-one schools at the time. We are now eighteen hundred. So we grow, we grow. And almost all of it has been word of mouth. So anyway, so that is kind of what the fee structure looks like. All of our staff who work with us get a hundred percent of their childcare. So those instructional aides who work with you can come work with us now and get their childcare taken care of. And this is all we do for a living. We don't do, we don't do a hundred things, okay? We do one thing really well. And this is all we focus on. We have dedicated recruiters who are recruiting across. You know, the state nonstop. So just in the state of Washington. So they're dedicated recruiters. That's all their job is. They're not in ratio. They don't have to worry about something or anything. So you know, again, this is the only thing we do. This is the only thing we focus on. So did I hit everything? All right. Questions? Any questions that you guys might have? Yeah, it's legit to. Lori has talked to probably fifteen of our current superintendents before even allowing us to have conversations with the district. So.
I like the interchangeability of the pair side, being able to have someone who needs part-time work. Have that flexibility to be able to work for the district and for a business like this.
We used to, pre-COVID, it was probably about sixty-five to seventy percent of our families were full-time. That's not the case anymore. There's a lot more two to three day families who are coming because they're working from home two to three days as well.
I like the presentation. I just saw Winwin all the way through this thing. My wife works over at Puyallup, so I was familiar with this prior. Not familiar, but always heard good things about it. So to familiarize myself with this program, with your presentation was good. I see a lot of benefit.
And one of your assistant suits was with us when we started in Federal Way. So he is very aware of our program when we made that transition as well. You guys made this easy. Thank you. All right.
Cindy, thanks again for flying all the way. You're bringing your team and hopefully we'll. Keep, keep this discussion going and work with City Bonnie Lake. So thank you.
Our next presentation is from Child Nutrition Services.
And I think, Char, like, did you just get out of a meeting?
No.
Oh, you weren't at O S P I with a meeting?
No.
Oh, got canceled.
Welcome, Char. Thank you for being here today. Thanks.
Hello. Nice to see you again. It's been a year. Last year's had made a lot my first time. Hopefully I'll be even more comfortable this time. So I'm just gonna give you a little brief talk about our department. So our department is pretty simple. We offer students healthy appealing meals so they're well nourished. They didn't learn. We maintain our fiscal responsibility. We support our community. And this whole district is always about supporting our community. And our child nutrition superheroes, our lunch crew, they know value and support our students every day. I. I thank my lucky stars every day that I have the staff that I have because they are very caring and they do a great job. So just some background information, we are federally funded and administered to the U S Department of Agriculture. This year, we're back to the old fashioned school lunch programs. So our national school lunch program, school breakfast program in the summer, well, regular summer food service program. So this year, meals are no longer free. We have to collect applications and then pay meals based on. Students eligibility status, free, reduced or paid. The one good news is that the state of Washington permanently funded the co-pays for reduced price students. So essentially they eat for free because the state is picking in the money for that. But other than that, if students aren't eligible, that they, they must pay the full lunch price or breakfast price. Some other things from last year. Last year, the supply chain issues were substantial. Things are a lot better this year. There's a few things. I'm not sure where the beach is, but. But I don't know where it is, but there's a few select items, but it is, it is better. Book costs are up. Significantly, they're starting to stabilize, especially milk prices starting to come down, but it, it went up substantially this year, up twenty percent from last year. So in relationship to district policy. Here in the process of updating policy sixty-seven hundred, which relates to nutrition, health and physical fitness. Kelly, Dan and Bang and I are all kind of working on, we all have pieces of it. It's a very long policy. And in particular, there's changes regarding. The meal charge policy and things that were in effect back in two thousand seventeen, the last time the policy was adopted. So we're in process of working on that. So one thing that also changed this year is we. Going back to regular meal service, that students have to reapply for benefits. They haven't had to do it since the pandemic. And so this October, we had to terminate the benefits of those who didn't reapply. But we're kind of really just going back to two thousand and nineteen. We're very similar. October two thousand and nineteen, we're at twenty-seven percent district wide and we're the same currently. We'll gain a few percentage points over the year because you don't have to drop any anymore. You're just adding, but it seems to be where we're landing. So I want to talk a little bit about community eligibility because it was a hot topic at the beginning of the year. Especially when Auburn came along and was able to feed all their kids for free. But it really comes down to basic math. You have to have at least forty percent I S P. And the I S P is different than free and reduced. I S P is based on direct certification, which is mostly food stamps. Welfare and those kind of programs. And so it's not just your free and reduced or. We're twenty-seven percent free and reduced, but our I S P was only twenty percent. So we are a long way from the forty percent required to operate C E P. We had zero out of our fourteen schools that hit that forty percent. Auburn had half of their schools were at forty percent. So they're able to average and get all of their schools covered. White River is similar to us. They weren't able, most districts in Pierce County weren't eligible for community eligibility. So it's, it's a very complicated problem. But we just, we just did not qualify. So there are a couple, maybe. Glimmers of hope on the horizon. Superintendent Wrightoff proposed free meals for all students starting next year. But he, it was one of the many packages he's putting forward to the legislature. So. We're hoping that that passes and get the funding and that's a permanent thing. It's anyone's call what's gonna happen because there's a lot of ass in this budget season. Federally, the child nutrition reauthorization, they began it and then it's, it never passed. So now the one hundred and eighteenth Congress will probably take it up again. There's nothing in their proposals for universal free meals, but they've got. Extra funding and things like that that might help us out, but nothing federally really signals that free meals for all will be happening. Okay, so our budget this year is. Our revenue is three point seven million. Expenditures are expected about three point five billion. We're pretty much on track looking at the first three months. We're doing pretty, pretty good. It's really hard to tell because a lot of expenses hit in September and things kind of even out throughout the year. So. But there's no reason to think that we can't meet our current budget as it stands right now. Our meal participation. I mean, last year was kind of crazy with the free meals for all. The number's on the left for breakfast. And you can see that. In two thousand and twenty-one, they spiked quite a bit. We're right now, we're a lot closer to two thousand and nineteen. You said in a lot of ways, this year kind of mirrors two thousand and nineteen. But just a lot of the same pattern. They're a little lower than they were back in two thousand and nineteen, but they're starting to grow. We hit a lot in November with the flu. A lot of kids were out. So, so we're really on track. Depending on the twenty nineteen numbers. Going from elementary, middle and high, again, elementary breakfast. Was really just off the charts. Last year, most schools adopted kind of a breakfast in the classroom model. And as you can see, we've kind of reverted back to how we were before. Middle and high are all pretty consistent. Same with lunch participation. The elementaries have actually restarted eating last few weeks. I don't know if they were all at stake, but. But all the numbers are continuing to grow. And so I expect our participation to continue to increase going into the new year. So I always, I always have this chart and always refer to this chart because we are at the base level of that. So I always, I always have this chart and always refer to this chart because we are at the base level of that chart. And kids just can't learn if they're hungry. So I always try and stress importance just to where we fit in the overall scheme. Everything on that pyramid is important. But the base level is critical and we have an important mission, making sure that we do what we can to take care of our kids. So equity. We saw the district policy and federal civil rights laws and provide meals in a non-discriminatory manner. We do whatever accommodations we can do to take care of our kids. We have a lot of rules, a lot of regulations, but there's always a way to get things done just to make sure everyone's taken care of. So what's working well, we do have a lot of fresh produce coming in. We have three different suppliers. We have, this year, we have supply chain assistance funds coming from the feds, substantial amount of money to be spent on unprocessed foods, which are basically produce and milk. So we have a lot of money to spend on produce and our staff do a good job of that. And kids love our salad bars. We always publish a lunch menu, but I really can't stress how much how much those kids eat off of the salad bars. And a lot of parents would be surprised to see some of their lunch trays because they do enjoy them. With a little lower lunch counts this year, we're starting to expand and to try and do more speed scratch items where we're not using as quite as many packaged foods and just cook rice from scratch and pasta and do those kinds of things. So we can just improve the quality of our food. Our staffing is pretty stable. We've got some really good new hires and some good substitutes. Again, the flu was kind of brutal. And and it's, you know, it's never a fixed thing, staffing, you know, people come and go and you come and go, but we're doing okay. We've got a lot of our direct deliveries with the supply chain improvements going directly to the middle and high schools. And we get nice fresh bread products every week and they're really nice products. So we want to continue to develop speed scratch recipes and train staff to do more in-depth cooking. Really excited about the new high school. Most of you know the crew over there and our manager Tammy, and she's very gung ho about cooking and she's got all that nice new equipment. So we're really excited to get that going. Want to source more local foods. Again, I have a lot of that money. What's hard about produce is the growing season is kind of opposite school season. So finding local foods we can procure in the middle of winter are difficult. But it's just something that we'll continue to work on. And then continue to outreach to families with outstanding meal balances. It's obviously an issue. It's an issue with every school district that some people can't pay or don't pay. And we just have to continue to do what we can to reach out to those families and see how we can help them.
Any questions?
It's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I think I asked a similar question to the great child last year on your presentation, where you pointed out that you know, the fact that the government was funding all free lunch programming. And I think I asked that question, maybe you remember, you know, if it's temporary, what's the plan for when they take it away and we have all this staff? So there's a follow-up question last year. Has the staff reduced to accommodate the, at least the thirds, what I can tell from the figures, drop in? You know, meals?
Well, what I did last year is I really just kind of rode the wave and tried not to overstaff and and I especially used attrition because once I have good hardworking employees, I want to keep them. And so not filling some positions, reducing hours on positions, changing things around has, you know, allowed me the budget capacity to, you know, to fill positions we need this year. I still have several. I'm going to kind of ride the wave and see if our participation goes up before I fill them. I just really ran tight last year, which was really kind of part of my staff and combined with the food difficulties, we saw, we just had a lot of processed food last year that was, you know, not the way we wanted to cook. But we could hustle some food out fast. So, so yeah, I just kept the staffing really tight last year, knowing that that the free meals would probably end. So I'm in okay shape now because I didn't lose a lot. So so, yeah. It's always, it's always a month by month, just figure out what we need and and again, when you have retirements and things like that, really taking a hard look at what, what the hours need to be.
Been a while since I ate a school lunch. Just my curiosity, what's the cost for a lunch or breakfast?
What?
What's the cost to?
What's the cost to student? Elementary lunches are three fifty and secondary is four dollars. And there's actually a formula that we have, that we're required to follow to determine our lunch prices. So it's called paid meals, paid lunch equity. And so yeah, we had to, we had to raise our prices last year to meet that regulation.
It sounds like you, through the time when you had to serve twice as many meals as you're currently doing it, sounds like our staff really had to step up and probably go through quite a bit of stress to do that. So in order to maintain your budget, knowing that eventually it would would slow down. So I have to opt the staff for helping you get that done. You know, probably what was a very tough time to get it done. I just have more of a comment that, you know, school lunch always gets a bad rap over history. But my high schooler comes home and tells me what she had for lunch. And she's excited about it. And she looks forward to the menu when there's certain things she tells us the night before. I'm so excited for lunch tomorrow. It's quite the change from the historical bad rap at school, which is, it's my house are up there. My high schooler really enjoys the food.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, Shar, thank you so much. All right, thank you. We have two items listed for information, the twenty-two, twenty-three school improvement plan, report and plans, as well as a change order report. Number twelve from Sumner High School, Phase One Building, listed in your packet. All right. Audience comments? I hear we have none. Or discussion?
You know. Can I say? All right. Hey, I was going to mention this earlier in board comments and I forgot to do it. I don't know that we've mentioned this, but our transportation department got a hundred percent on their unannounced inspection. I think that's awesome. When somebody comes in your front door and says, I'm going to inspect, and you get a hundred percent. I know we have a history of being, you know, our transportation department for the buses is outstanding and they just, they rocked it again by having a hundred percent. That's great. And the other thing I want to comment on it, and I know I probably said this last week, but you know, that presentation we got on absenteeism, the importance of that, that just stuck with me all week. And I think that was a good presentation that really I mean, had so much good stuff to say about the importance of, you know, kids getting to school. And you know, I just kudos to that presentation. They did a fantastic job because I've been thinking about it quite a bit this week. Good job.
Thank you. Any other discussion points to make?
Unless somebody else wants to go ahead of me. Well, earlier this week, I think it was Monday, I had the privilege of going on over to what they call a patron tour. What they did is they invited local real estate agents to get on a bus and go around to some of the facilities. And they answered questions. I think some of the benefit of being on the bus in between going to the buildings were the amount of questions that weren't asked, that the superintendent fielded, so did their capital facilities people. Anyway, that was something I thought was kind of neat. And they don't just limit it to the real estate agents. That's what this one was. They go out to other community members as well. As a real estate agent, we do have a unique perspective. It says we know what people are looking for in a school district when they come in. And also we get feedback from people who who are here, so we can let it. While I was on the bus and the capital facility guy was asking, answering questions from all the other real estate agents, this came up. We were out at Emerald Hill, sorry, Emerald Bridge High School, and he pointed out that, well, yeah, all these houses back behind the, this wooded area here are all in the Ording School District. And they constantly waiver into our district because they, it takes them like forty minutes bus ride to get to Ording. And so I talked to him separately and said, well, well, Sumner, we got a similar situation in the Hall. So I know that we are aware of the situation where parents that are moving into New Orleans and Holly find out that, oh, they're in the Ording School District. And the bus ride to get their kid down to school is longer than what they would want. So they approached the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. And so I guess, again, not to put anything more on your plate, but I thought it might be a good idea if somebody from our district reached out to Puyallup and talked about similar issues we're having and the need to address things with Ording. And again, we're not going to be doing a whole lot with it other than bringing it to Ording's attention so that when residents in that area do a petition to join our school district because they don't want to have a forty-five minute bus ride. And Ording's collecting all the impact fees. And even when their students arrive here, yeah, we get to stay apportioned, but we don't get all the levy money. That levy money goes to to Ording. So, you know, I think it behooves us to start a conversation. We've been pretty patient with Ording because they had a new superintendent and an intern and stuff like that. But, you know, if somebody from our district reached out to appear in Puyallup, make sure that they're talking about some of the same issues and actually went down and talked to Ording. You know, maybe, maybe we can head something off going in the future. That's just my thoughts. I open it up for discussion. Nothing will get solved tonight, but I know you've looked at it before too.
Well, and I think there's an assumption that we haven't had those conversations. I mean, we have. We've had those conversations extensively with attorneys and their capital facility people. So Ording is very aware of what's happening in our district. They're running a bond right now, hoping to build up in the Tali area, but and we wish them great success in passing that bond because I know that they want to place some schools up there. So as far as we're concerned, Puyallup has a completely different situation that I don't want to get involved in or that you probably don't want to get involved in. But in terms of our relationship with Ording, we have had conversations and they know where we stand and I mean, we are being patient to see how their bond goes and wish them the best.
Any other discussion? No, I was just going to wish everyone a good holiday break. Just to have some time with yourselves. All right, next regular board meeting will be held right here in the central office courtroom on Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you guys for being here late December.